Andrew, whenever you're ready.
Okay. The time is now six oh five P M. I'm calling to order the Highland Park Architectural Conservation District Commission November twentieth twenty twenty five public hearing commissioners, President or myself, Commissioner Andrew Shelburne, Commissioner Lena Barrios and Commissioner Ward Hyatt. And that's that's it for this for the time being. Today, the commission will be holding a public hearing to review applications in accordance with the Commonwealth Massachusetts Executive Order suspending certain provisions of the meeting law, including the March twenty eighth twenty twenty five amendment, extending the suspension of these provisions until June thirtieth twenty twenty seven. We are conducting this meeting online to ensure public access to the deliberations of the Highland Park Architectural Conservation District Commission. The public may access this call through telephone or video conferencing. This hearing is being recorded. All further conversations between the commissioners should be audible to the public in attendance until the hearing has begun. Are there any media or elected officials currently present? If so, please state your name, title, and affiliation. I am hearing none. Members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask. Well, sorry. Members of the public will have the opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you are calling in and cannot use the platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand. You can send your questions to staff via email at Highland A C D C at Boston dot gov. Public comment will be limited to two minutes per person, and and we just do public comment after commissioners have had the chance to ask questions.
Hey, let me. Here's our agenda.
Tonight's agenda is to ratification of the October twenty third twenty twenty five public hearing minutes and the November sixth twenty twenty five public hearing minute. Number two on the agenda is a advisory review for.
Fifty one Dudley.
Yeah, I think, yeah, fifty one Dudley Street, which is a project to revitalize the first two floor floors of a former Masonic Lodge building and add a three-story addition, resulting in eighteen residential units totaling thirteen thousand one hundred and thirty square feet. And there's a discussion of the draft bylaws and then draft updates and then adjournment. So this is now ratification of the public hearing minutes. I I've read them and they they look good to me. I did. I did send Joe some very minor edits to one of them.
Yeah, that was to the the November sixth twenty twenty five public meeting where we discuss discuss the bylaws. I did leave out the words under discussion discussion topics citing the Highland Park A C Ds. It should have said A C D standards and criteria, and all provisos wrote staff comments and staff recommendations. So I'll I'll make that that edit.
Yeah, yeah, it was just a minor edit. But that's the other. The other one looks really good. So is there any discussion? Okay, a motion to approve both meeting minutes.
So moved.
Um, I'll I'll make that motion. Angela.
Andrew, we can have you second it.
Oh, okay, great. I didn't. All right.
So I'll just do a roll call vote. Commissioner Shelburne.
Yes.
Commissioner Boris Milner.
Yes.
And Commissioner Ward Hyatt.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, now now on to the preservation presentation of fifty one Dudley Street.
All right, I think the representatives, I think I've I've made you all co-hosts. Is there anyone from the design team that still needs to be?
I would like to. I would like to limit the the presentation to ten minutes with the idea that commissioners are going to ask questions and that the applicant can can elaborate on the questions further describe their project.
All right, so I'm going to stop sharing and then who will be here? Joseph, I see you're here in.
Yes, I am here and we were expecting Charles to be here as well. I'm not sure if he's here. He's presenting the slides.
All right, would he be under the someone project management? Could that be?
That could be.
Andrew, may I also suggest that we focus on the changes because we this has come under advisory before, right, Joe?
Yeah, yeah.
Although I don't know. Oh, here comes Ernest. I don't know that Angela Ward Hyatt was at that.
Charles might be project management. That might be.
Okay, so welcome, Ernest. Commissioner Ernest Costin has joined us and.
Good afternoon.
Commissioner Ward, excuse me, sorry, Commissioner Ward Hyatt, did you? Did you attend the first advisory review for this project?
I don't recall. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yes, Joe, I'm sorry. I am. I am project management. This is Charles Rob.
Great, welcome.
Yes. Yes.
All right, Andrew, so how would you like to move forward?
I think there was one more. One more person we need to share, which was Jonah.
Yeah, I think he's a co-host. Yes, he's a co-host.
Okay.
Yeah, I would just I I would just try to keep it to ten minutes. And if you can focus on on the changes mostly and and I just want to remind folks that this commission doesn't deal with anything on the interior of the building. So if you can avoid talking about the interior or the program of the building, you know, those things aren't really under our control. So unless it has to do specifically with the exterior, I would just avoid talking about.
Okay, that's that's great.
And Andrew, before they launch, do you want me just to say what my staff comments were?
Yes, please, please read your staff comments.
I'll just say that, you know, the the background. So this is fifty one Dudley Street Restoration of Existing Two-Story Facade and Construction of a Three-Story Addition. The existing building was designed by architect Augustus Warren Gould and built circa eighteen ninety five as the clubhouse for the Dudley Association. It later served as the headquarters for the Lettich Workmen Society, an early part of the organized labor movement in the United States, and then served as a Masonic Lodge. A fire in the nineteen eighties destroyed the upper stories of the building. The applicant came to the commission for an advisory review of this project at the July twenty fourth twenty twenty five public hearing. At that hearing, commissioners discussed the size of the proposed green space and the appropriateness of the height of the building with the new addition, comparing the height and number of stories of the original building prior to the demolition of its upper floors to the height of the new addition. They also discussed the restoration of the building's facade and the design of its new windows facing Dudley Street. Since the July advisory review, the applicant has been working closely with the planning department and staff of the Boston Landmarks Commission to develop the current project proposal. And one thing I I don't think we have included in this presentation and I just thought of it earlier today, when you come for design review, we we probably should take a look at the building that was approved to the right, just so we can see that for context, because that currently is under construction now. So I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Yes, thank you very much, Landmarks Commission and commissioners and the volunteer members. We appreciate your time this evening. Tonight, we'll be presenting fifty one Dudley, which, based on the prior advisory review, we were organize certain updates to bring the building into conformance of the the structures and specifications relating to the Highland Park Historic District as well the historic elements of the building's facade. So basically, we appreciate all the community stakeholders, obviously the Butter Community, the Roxbury Neighborhood District, the City of Boston for helping us in the design process, the historic presentation and Mark's Commission being one of the districts in Highland Park and the Planning and Development Agency, as well as the City of Boston as far as accessibility concerns for the project. And as well as as the actual ownership, we appreciate this as a local owned project and scenario as far as hiring and local job creation. So from our last meeting, the important aspects were the selection of materials based on the the reflection of the community's historic character, the balance between form and function as far as Kennelworth and the Dudley grade change, which actually causes an effect on how the building height is articulated and recommendations as to the windows to reflect harmony with the first two stories and additional three stories. This was recommended by the Landmark Commission under advisory and as also a part of numerous design sessions with the City of Boston and articulation of the roof sections between the north and the southern aspects of Dudley and Kennelworth. We also would like to talk about the management of the green space in the courtyard, which I think is important as far as adding to the community and also adding accessibility was important to this building being an older historic building, which we would like to have elders be part of this building buildings programming. So initially, I think we've got an architectural team on the line Joseph, and they can go through some of the initial aspects of the different renditions of how the project was designed and where we basically ended up in the progression or the evolution of working with the city and the Landmark Commission. Jonah, are you there?
Yes, I am. So if I can just, I know we we're limited for time. I can just go through this very quickly because I know we we want to stick to the ten-minute rule here. So I think this slide, what this slide is showing is is the original thinking of the design. Of course, every time we have meetings with city officials, we we adjust the design. On the left was the was the first pass that we took. Actually, it's not the first one, but that was the first pass that was presented. We had several designs in the past. But this is on the left is the the first presentation that we shared with 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 the City of Boston, potentially with landmarks. Then that that evolved to what you see here on on slide number two, just again, trying to pick up on the original architecture of the building, the the language, you're trying to keep keep it consistent with with the original building. So and then then we 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 kind of further it a little bit more. If you look in the next slide, we can we can see some of the changes that that we talked about. On the left-hand side here, that was actually a sketch that we received from from Landmark, giving us some ideas on how we could articulate the window replacement and 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 the language of the windows to kind of reflect a little bit more of what the original building looked like. So we we did that. And then and then then and on our last meeting, one of the one of the comments that we received was how do we make this building read more like a four-story building? Because the original building was a four-story building or first one we presenting right now proposing is a five-story building. How do we make that read more like the original four-story building? And one of the approach that we took was trying to group the windows and floors three and four to make it look like one entity. And and so if somebody driving by or maybe taking a look at the building peripherally, you may read to you as a four-story building versus a five-story building. And this is one of the one of this is the approach that we took. We grew up floors number two and three into kind of a panelized building system and 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 it and and that was received warmly by B P D A and the designers. So I think this is this is what we end up with and and for the elevation on Dudley Street. On the on the next slide, we may look at Kennedy Wall Street. So one of the comments we receive on Kennedy Wall Street was that the 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 articulation on Dudley Street was so different from the one on 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 Kennedy Wall Street. So one of the things we decided to do is propose is kind of the Men's Hard type feel for Kennedy Wall Street and 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 also grouping the windows on the third and fourth floor to again to to make it feel more like a four-story building, as you can see here. So we made those changes and 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 we would also maybe talk about the roof articulation that we one of the things we did was at the beginning, we were proposing a kind of a standing seam roof, a sitting metal roof, but we decided to maybe bring that back to a shank old tap roof that is more related to what other buildings in the neighborhood. So so these are the changes we made in the actual elevation of the building. I know I know the 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 board is not interested in what's happening in the interior. So we so this is this is the changes we made on on this. The other the other change we we also made is is if you go back to last slide, yeah, is regarding the 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 deck, we had a smaller deck, which is a community deck that we have for this for the tenants. One of the comments that we see from from our last review was how do we make this deck larger to to make to make it more useful to the to the to the to the users of the building? So we we've enlarged it since and and it's nice. It's a much larger deck than it was originally. So we, if I can just recap very quickly because of the limited time, we we actually made three interventions since the last time we met with the community. I mean, we met with the with the with the city and 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 other related groups. One, we changed the elevations on 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 Dudley Street to kind of group the windows on three and four to make it make it real like one entity. We changed the elevations on on Kennelworth, where it was kind of a flat roof. We changed it to a Men's Hard type roof, and also we made the deck larger. These are the three things that we did that kind of responded to the comments we received last time.
And I think Fred, just clearly, let's let's go over to this this actually, this is some current activity based on the Landmark Commission's direction and organization with the butter who's currently under construction. The deck was shored up so we can preserve this existing deck until we get approval from the Landmarks Commission. And also this pier is actually going to be in place and remain in place as part of the historical character of the building. So this was shored up. It may be repointed and aspects of it redesigned. So it's clearly the same image, but um, and this is a small image to top right showing the first two stories of the construction that's currently complete and ongoing of the butter. As mentioned by Joe Cornish, we we did not bring an example of the butter's butter's building, but it is shown in a small example over here to the left. This is the modern building that the butter is putting in place today. One thing that we should probably show that we have a few minutes left is the exterior materials. Did you want to speak towards that?
Yeah, I can. I can speak to that very briefly because of the limited time we have. We are intending to keep the the existing brick that is on the lower two floors. These are two floors that that were spared by the fires. So we we are, other than replacing the windows and we're going to keep the openings as they are, we're going to keep the front entrance as it is, other than maybe making it, other than making it a handicap accessible. For the for the addition part, we wanted to add elements and materials that will not compete with the existing brick, but that would complement it. So we 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 proposing having fabricative materials for the for the second for the for the top three floors that we are adding and 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 we're also going to have the architectural roof shingles as 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 a roof and and for our for deck material, we talked about introducing some black wood iron railing that would that would complement the the brick and and also the the new fabricative material that we are introducing for the for the top floors, which is the additional part of the building. So I mean, I mean, we feel that this is this is these these elements and materials are the materials that we find all throughout the neighborhood. We 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 work the neighborhood. We're trying to make sure that whatever we bring in, it will not be a foreign element to the design. So I we feel like it is successfully adding to the to the character of the building and not really intruder and creating intrusion in terms of foreign materials or foreign design as you know, as you can sometimes see in 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 these kind of additions. So.
Very much. Okay, and that that's pretty much where we are. And obviously, the addition of the green space is something that the community did not have and the accessibility the community did not have. And it's actually in need of opportunities for accessible unit structures and elderly individuals in the community. Yes.
Okay, yeah, I would like to to open it. You guys will have more time to to answer questions from commissioners, so you can elaborate.
Okay.
So there'll be more opportunities to describe what you have designed here. So I just want to open it up to commissioners. And is this is this the end of the slides? Are there more slides?
This is this is where we would like to close the presentation. There are other aspects, but I think this is focused on the landmarks aesthetic qualifications and the the relationship to the exterior of the building.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, go ahead. If are there commissioners who would like to jump in and ask questions? Ernest has his hand up. Go ahead, Ernest.
Thank you. Basically, I I like I I like where you're coming from on this. I like grouping the windows together. I think that was nice. And I also like saving the what do you call that the pillar there with the by the deck?
The pier.
Yeah, is that right there on Dudley Street?
Yes, it is.
Okay, yeah, I like that. That's good. I wasn't sure about the amount of green space there. I don't know if there's that much space, four feet space, but how how are you treating that?
Yes, yes, it's fourteen feet in width, and I believe the length was exactly. What's the length, Fred, on that?
Well, it goes the whole length of the building. So I mean, I think we're talking maybe eighty feet. So so currently, what we have right now is a deck. There's really no green space currently in that particular lot. And and what I think we're doing is by removing the deck, we're introducing a kind of a community garden. Well, a garden that will be not a community garden, but a garden for the tenants that is that would be serviced via a deck that that also has a connecting stair that will allow you to go from Dudley Street up the deck and 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 get to Kennedy Wall Street, but also that will be also accessible for handicap folks through through to the ground floor, up the elevator, and then to the common room.
Got it. Got it. So I I have a question. Is there any possibility of having like a raised bed slash flower pot or something? You know, that maybe the tenants could plant something, you know, I'm not saying necessarily, you know, ornamental cabbages and, you know, cauliflower, but you know, even peppers look really good sometimes in the flower pot. You know?
Well, actually, I think we the the landscape architect is showing some 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 elements on the deck itself that could be used as such. I mean, I don't want to speak for the for the landscape architect. I think you may be on the call that can speak to that. But if you look at this.
David, are you there? David, would you like to chime in? I think the landscape architect is online. Maybe we didn't include him in the communication. Oh, there he goes. Yes, the question was about participatory relationship to, yeah, planting and the community participating.
Especially a passageway there.
Yes, the lighting. It's a pretty shady spot down there, so you're not going to get a lot of peppers and and vegetables.
A white a white garden then.
A white garden could be very nice. Yes, there are planters on the deck front and back and the garden space itself is getting a little crowded, so I'm not I would certainly keep that in mind as things develop. There are some sort of later developments in that space that so that's really a work in progress, but that if there if we feel there's enough light for raised beds of some sort that the tenants could tend, that would certainly be a positive thing.
David, can you can you speak to those planter boxes that I see on the deck with those opportunities?
Yeah, no, absolutely. That again, the it is somewhat shaded, but if those were attended by tenants, that would be fine. It needs to be very clear that who is responsible for them? And if they get neglected, then there needs to be a process for correcting that. But yeah, whether it's the management that maintains them or tenants that maintain them, I I think it could be a it really gives tenants more of a an investment in in their dwelling place if they are able to plant. And I always encourage that. And I think that that could be a very positive aspect to living here is that you have a planter.
That's very true.
Work with.
Very true, David. Yeah, I think I think we definitely would encourage that relationship to the building with the individuals that would be living and as well the flowers in the the community garden area, the small little space here. We think it will complement the the programming of the elderly people.
Thank you. That that was good. I I don't recall how many units?
Eighteen units, eighteen units. And yeah, and the the important aspect is, you know, there is affordability requirement. Twenty percent of it is required for affordability. And then there's also a handicap aspect to it where a couple of units are handicapped. I went through extensive relationship with the accessibility Commission, the Architectural Accessibility Commission, to define the entrances and exits for handicap accessibility. Certain units will be programmed for that. And then, you know, obviously, the elderly. And then, uh, you know, obviously the elderly, we, we love to have them involved with the community to really. Lighten up the space and make it a great opportunity to live in the city close and walking distance from, from Dudley, which is uh. About to really take off and have opportunities for its people.
Yeah, well, it, it looks exciting and it sounds exciting, so I'm assuming that you guys must be as excited. Uh, one, one last question for me. Um, what, is that a tree I'm looking at uh on the corner there?
This one right here?
Yeah, yeah, uh, that's, that looks like a street tree there, but on the property itself, is that a tree on that?
Right here?
Uh, no, all the way on the other corner.
This one here?
Uh, no, come across the uh stairs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, coming down, straight down, come, come down, down.
Uh, I haven't decided what it would be, it'd probably be a smaller flowering tree.
A, a flowering tree in the shade there, you gonna do?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so these are all, this is all new uh landscape and planting that we're going to introduce to the neighborhood. This area, there's a little bit of planting here, but we, we would like to really scape this out, so it really feels comfortable. For everybody in the neighborhood, and this, this red line is showing. A beautiful fence that we're gonna put up to kind of keep the building halfway secure, these two red lines.
You mean to secure the building or just to keep out the dogs, or what are you, what are you talking about?
No, no, I think, I think we, we don't want um anybody accessing the building. Uh, but it's not gonna look like a security gate, it'll look more like an architectural type of gate. That has, you know, certain beauty to it, so.
Under six feet?
Yeah, it'll definitely, it'll definitely be under six feet.
Yes, yes, we, we can't lock in, we can't lock in the elderly people here.
Right, okay.
No, no, we wanna, gotta be careful.
Yeah, well, you gotta get it down to four feet, maybe three feet, you know? All right, all right, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, uh, yeah, uh, I might just mention, yes, definitely four feet on the Kennelworth side. Uh, and on the Dudley Street side, um, uh, the, the. Right now, we have a transformer uh going into that space that might change, we're hoping that might go into the street, but that's. Um, and we're pushing for that, but we'll see. Uh, there's also a dumpster we need to uh. Uh, attend to, so a six-foot fence, iron fence uh might be more appropriate there. If we're trying to screen uh what's in there.
Yes, shrubs make a better screen than a fence, I think.
Yeah, and this is interesting, uh, this is this pier here, obviously, and this is about twelve feet here. Between this floor, but um, I think uh, one of the beauties of the transformer. Scenario and placement, uh, we're working with the butter currently, that's. Uh, under construction at this point, and we're here, we're gaining indication that. Ever Source may want to do a shared transformer that's placed in the street.
Okay.
They may give us a little bit more space. And uh, just a quick note, quick tidbit is very interesting, we went into the historical records under the city of Boston, and this. This little area right here used to be a little retail store.
Oh.
If you look in the records.
Didn't know that.
I just want to acknowledge uh. Please, please go ahead. Can you hear me? Uh.
You should be able to unmute yourself, let me. Angela, can you unmute?
Okay, sorry, I'm on my phone, it's uh, uh, I found a, a place to, where I could. Do camera and, and see the presentation. Um, I was, is there a picture in this presentation of the? Building besides that little detailed shot of that pier, is, is there a picture of the building being demolished anywhere in the presentation?
And it's not being demolished.
It's not being demolished?
No.
Okay.
They're saving, they're saving the, the brick facade um of the building and building. A three-story addition on top of it.
Okay, is there, is there a picture of the brick facade as it looks today?
Maybe you could pull up a street view, Joe, a Google street view.
So.
I thought I saw it in the earlier part of the presentation.
Right there.
When I.
Right there. Okay. Okay. And. Can you go, going back to maybe that elevation drawing, um. I, I'm wondering, Joe, can you summarize, um, I, I was having connection problems when you. Were reviewing the staff comments. Um, I, I'm wondering if you could just summarize if you feel. Like the staff comments are being addressed as the de- design has moved forward.
Yes, we've met, and when I say we, um, the staff architect, Chelsea Blanchard and myself, um, since the July. Hearing, we've had two or three meetings with the applicant along with the planning department. And, you know, I mean, this is a good image here, you see the original. Building on the left, and then there was a fire in the nineteen eighties that demolished the second and third stories. So, um, what we had worked with and what was the direct, the directive, one of the directives from the July hearing. Was to work on the grouping of the windows and to help this facade. Appear more as a four-story building than a five-story building, and um, we had a discussion in July. About what the height of the original building was compared to what's being proposed, and the applicant, I think. Was it a, just a couple of feet, what we're, what we're seeing now is a couple of feet taller of what was there originally, I believe.
Is, um, I have some questions about this facade, this slide on the, um, the image on the right. Is the, the, I'll call it the, the original portico entry, is it really off-center? From those two groupings of windows in the brick? It's very off-center in that facade elevation. And.
Can you go back to that um? Image of the existing building, I think that'll help. In the beginning of the presentation.
Oh, I'll probably be going back to it a few times, so just remember what page it is.
There you go.
Yeah, it's not, so that's centered. That looks very centered to me, but if you go to your elevation, it is. Very off-center, so I'm just wondering, are you proposing to change it, or is this just? A drafting error?
No, it's just the. No, it's not a drafting error, it's, it's the actual uh. It's the perspective of the model, so the model is showing it with a slight, from a slight angle.
Can, can you go back to that elevation? I'm, I'm an architect, so I, I understand. Perspective, but that, that was a straight-on elevation, no, not that one, the straight-on elevation that you were on before. Um, with the side-by-side.
This is an example of the perspective adjustment, and if you look at the building from.
Nope, that one, oops, sorry.
This is, this is centered. This is centered.
I think, I think this is, this is a good representation of what's happening. Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name. It says Shaw Silver here, I don't, doesn't say.
Angela.
Angela, if you, yeah, I, 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 I think if you look at the line drawing. I mean, this is, this is really.
Okay.
What you should.
There's, there's definitely an error with the uh.
Yeah, that other, and, and is there a reason why, you know, you look at the, the first story and the second story windows? Those are existing openings and those vertically on each other, center line, center window is over center window. And on the third and fourth stories, those windows are not centered.
Yeah, so if I can speak to that, Charles, if you can go uh to this uh. To the image of the, yes, this image here on the left. Uh, if you can see, that was, that was really a, a directive we received from Landmarks. Um. Where they, they, they wanted us to kind of left-center, uh, let, uh.
Okay, left justify?
Left justify, sorry, that's what I was looking for, left justify and right justify, just, uh, because, because it, the, the, one, one of the things that we are dealing with is. How do we make the actual interior units work? So, uh, making sure they work and also have a facade that is harmonious and makes sense, so, so. We, we, uh, no, original design, we did have everything centered. And, and in one of the comments we received, they, and you can see here by the sketch, there was a kind of left justify and right justify on each side of the building.
Okay. Yeah, and it's, it's this image there on the right, well, uh, both of them, it clearly looks off-center.
Yeah, I, I think, I think, uh, I, I think the window, I think the windower may, may have, may have shifted a little bit here, but I think. Uh, what governs is the line drawings.
Um, I do like in that sketch, the, the slide that you were just on, I do really like the, the sketch showing. The broader gables, which looks. More like the original building, um. They're still.
Yeah.
My taste, um, they, they don't. They, they don't um kind of re- reach the. The, the magnificence of the original gables um on, on the structure, not that. You have to replicate them, I'm just, it, it's um, you know, it's uh.
If I can speak to that, Angela, I know, I know exactly, I mean, we struggle with this as well, but the, the issue is. Uh, if we were to really replicate exactly what we have in the original, with the brother gable you, that you speak of. We would, we, we would essentially lose two units.
Lose two, yes, okay, I guess, because I'm, I'm saying that it's probably gonna get bigger if you have two bigger gables, um.
Not.
Uh, but um, broader, you know, broader gables, but um.
Oh, you mean, even in terms of width?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay, I thought you, you meant.
Yeah.
And height, probably too.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, uh. You know, I, I don't, I don't think you would.
Possible, right, that's possible.
I don't, yeah, exactly, I don't, I don't think that would, that would, that would be. I mean, to us is pleasing the way it is like right now, but I mean, we can look at it with a brother gable, to me, that's a small. Adjustment to the, to, to the elevation, you know, I don't think that would, that would.
To me, um, the gables um are almost, um, there's, there's almost. The windows beneath them, that band of five windows beneath them is too close to the edge of the gable, there's not like. Enough breathing room of the facade around it, and you look at the original building and how there was kind of breathing room around. Between the windows and the gables, um, so that's the reason I bring it up. Um, obviously, I, I wish the eve line was. Lower, um, you said that it's, it's um about what, two feet taller, you said, than the original building?
I, I think it would be about two to three feet taller than the original building.
Okay, because it, it, I mean, um, you could, um. What, what is your finished ceiling height on that um fourth story um unit?
Eight feet.
Eight feet?
Yeah.
Um, yeah. If you were eight, it, yeah, well, okay, if you were able to go to seven feet, um, you could have like the, um, a little, you know. Slope to the interior of the ceiling, um, uh, to bring the eve down a little bit.
Yes, uh. We, we could, although we really want to avoid having a seven-foot ceiling, uh.
No, it wouldn't be the whole ceiling, it would just be around the edge of that.
At the edge, it would slope back to, to eight feet as you go further inside the unit, I understand that. Uh, but um, I mean, we, I mean, these are small adjustments, we can certainly, do not mind taking a look at that, and I think we, we, we. We've had so many versions of this facade that I'm sure we have a version where we had those larger gables as you, as you, as you. Talk about, but I, it just, for some reason, we, we, we felt that uh. It was not working for us, but we can take, definitely take a look at it.
All right.
Uh, what was your name again? I'm sorry.
Angela.
Uh, Angela Ward Hyatt.
Angela, oh, awesome, okay, and this is the firm you work for, Silver?
Yes, yeah, I'm. I'm, I'm a commissioner on the landmarks, but.
I appreciate your perspective on this, and uh, we definitely, um. We, we definitely are open to how the, the design uh works to the benefit of the community and the historic commission.
And Angela, if I can just add one more time, I think, I just, just, and one of the reasons I think why we kind of. Made those gable a little bit smaller, because I think, because they, they, they're also shorter, and I think.
I know.
We made them wider, they didn't look as, they didn't look right to us, but we'll take a look at them again. When they taller, it's, it's, it's a lot easier to make them wider.
And, yes, and, because I think you have the right slope of the roof for the gables, I think that, that's right on, um. I, I guess, um, and I fully realize that what I'm suggesting, if you keep the eve in the same height. Would make the building appear even taller, which is not really the intent of what I'm getting after, I'm just getting after. A building that has kind of more um. More proportions that are more um familiar around the neighborhood. Um, so, uh, anyway. Thanks for.
Yes, now, we'll take, we'll take a look at it, and if it works, we'll, we'll, we'll.
Okay.
Will not mind adapting it. Thank you.
Um. And I realize this is maybe against the, the staff comments that you had gotten from landmarks, but.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I, I. I don't know if it's the, the centering of the windows or not being centered, the kind of left justified and right justified, um. Or maybe it's more that there just feels like there's a lot of um space in between the groupings of windows and, um. Uh, and I realized there weren't any windows in the middle of um the, the original building, but um. Uh, I don't know, it just, it feels a little, a little spare, a little barren um on that facade. Um, I think the um, one thing that, that we've, we're looking at a lot. Um, for new construction is the proportion of window to wall and to, to have something that feels right. Um, and usually what we're seeing in the neighborhood are smaller. Individual or, or, or small groupings of punched windows rather than huge bands and ribbons of windows, um, so. Um. Uh, but I, again, I appreciate that you're kind of doing something that's inspired by the original building.
Also, is kind of reflecting other uh prior comments that we receive, of course, every time we have this meeting, that somebody new. That has uh some new ideas that we.
Yeah, and I realize I'm the new one this time, so I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's okay. We do get some new ideas and, 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 and it's only making the, the building better, so, so I, I appreciate all the comments, but of course. Sometimes you hear something that, that conflicts with what we heard prior, so we gotta find the, the right balance, kind of the sweet spot.
I appreciate that, yeah.
No problem.
We appreciate your comments.
But something I would recommend is if you hear some comments, and I just, just write those down, and, and you can, when you come back the next time. You can say, you know, we heard exactly this, and this is how, exactly how we're responding to that comment that was made.
Yeah.
Um, because I'm not, we had the first um. The first advisory hearing we had so long ago, like, I don't exactly remember what advice we gave you, um.
Oh, I, I, I think I started my meeting, I think I, just, just jump in, Charles, if you don't mind. I think I started the meeting by kind of describing what we heard from, from, from prior uh, uh, meetings. Uh, and, 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 and they were really concentrated around the window, the windows, the height. Uh, the deck, the, the courtyard, um, and, and the, and the Kennelworth. Uh, elevation facade, this is, those are the things that we heard uh, uh, during the last uh time we got together. And, and, and these changes reflect those uh, or adjustment to those comments.
Okay.
Correct, these are, these are the areas that we, we will put a little slide together to um. Say we were gonna address these areas based on your comments from the last time, correct?
Okay, I didn't know where, I didn't know if these were our comments or from. You know, you meet with so many different agencies, you know?
Yeah.
This may be my articulation of your comments, so I'm sorry, it may not be directly your comments, how you stated them, but made them.
I mean, we probably wouldn't have told you to add accessibility and affordability for elders.
No, no, that, I added that to it just to let you know that the building did require adjustment for that. Under accessibility, so just.
Okay, understood. Okay, understood.
And I think the comments, I think they did a great job at the beginning of the presentation of saying, this is what we heard the last time, and what we've heard from subsequent meetings from the landmarks commission staff, so there have been additional drafts and comments um, following our review, the staff, um, has also been advising the project.
Okay, thank you. Um, Helena, do you have, have some comments? Uh, that you wanna share?
And apologies, um, that I had to be off cam, I'll be back on in a few minutes, but, um, no, I think, um, just appreciate the, you know, responsiveness to, to what was shared and, and the additional information on materials. Um, I think that, that helps really bring it to life, um, so, um, I think it's, it's on the right track, but, so no, no additional requests or questions from my end.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure quite about the porch situation, I mean, the the standards and criteria are telling us to preserve significant features of the district, um, and that porch is, I, I understand it's in like a pinned between two very large buildings, but it is a pretty significant feature, and I understand that a lot of the architectural detailing from that porch has been removed over time. Um, I don't know, I just was curious to see the porch, uh, it seems like it was kind of an automatic decision to remove it, but, you know, what, I wonder what would happen if, if folks, um, you know, saw it as an opportunity. But, uh, that was just, uh, that was one thing I observed, I'm also, I'm not sure about the fifth story, um, uh, I don't, there's not a lot of precedence, um, for five-story buildings um, that I've seen in, in this part of the neighborhood. You know, most of the abutting buildings are, are three and maybe four stories. Uh, I understand that you're, you're doing a, a good job of trying to hide that fifth story with the roof and, and, um, I would say, uh, it's kind of, at the main entrance, we're looking at on this side, there's, there's, uh, like, it seems like the corner of the building is really overhanging quite a lot, um. Uh, I'm not sure how much, how, how far is that building overhanging, what, what is that overhang, is that like a four-foot overhang? On the, on the left corner?
Uh, it's the left corner here?
Yeah, the far left corner, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I, I, if I can just speak to that, Charles, um, I, I think the overhang is, 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 it's, it's still debatable, because, um, uh, I, I, I think in the final that's, I, I, I would say design drawings or construction drawings that could be reduced, you know, so we're not married to that overhang, to the, to the length, but right now, I think it's around four feet of, of overhang, it's just, it's just, it's, uh, it is, I think we're serving two purposes, I think it adds interest to the, to the design on the, on this elevation, you also add a little bit more breathing room for those units on, um, on those, on those top three floors. Uh, certainly, uh, we're not married to it, uh, I, I think, you know, it's, I think it's, it's, uh, it's, it's.
Something to consider, it kind of stands out, um, I don't know that there are overhangs like that that exist in the neighborhood, um, so it's kind of, I would say it's just out of context. And I'm not, I'm not certain it's a good idea to mix different roof types together, on one side, you have kind of a gable, and then, uh, and then on this side a mansard, um.
Yeah.
You know, I, I would think about that a little more carefully, maybe it's another gable on this side, maybe it's connected to the gable on the other. Uh, I know you're trying to get living space on the fifth floor, but, um.
Yeah, if I can speak, if I can speak to that, Andrew, uh, you know, as, as, as the architect, you know, we we struggle with both the aesthetic of the building, respecting the historic nature of our surroundings, and also making the units livable. We, you know, the, 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 the top units on Dudley Street are really compromised a little bit because of the, because of the gable, you know, uh, if, I know we don't wanna get into the floor plans, but we've looked at them, and the floor plans, uh, if you look at the floor plan, there's, there's two units that are on the fifth floor on, on, on Dudley Street are much smaller and, and less, uh, I'll say pleasing in terms of, of, of flow, uh, just because of the, of, of, of the gable that we, that we introduced. Uh, with the mansard roof, uh, I, I think we are, we are, we are, we are able to actually create a much better unit and, 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 and originally what we had was a flat roof that really and, and I know we don't have a slide showing that, it was, it was a flat roof on that end, on, on this facade of this building, and this, uh, uh, introduction that you're seeing here was a reflection of what we heard last time from, 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 from folks in, in the last meeting, wanting this facade to, uh, more mimic what we see on Dudley Street, because, because, I mean, and they had a good, they had a good point that where, you know, the, the, the Kennaworth Street elevation looks so much different than the, than the, uh, Dudley Street elevation, so we thought that was a, a, a compromise between the two. You know, we could not go, we didn't wanna, we didn't wanna stick with the, exactly, so this is, this is something you see on, right, right next door. So we didn't wanna, we, we understood the flat roof was somewhat controversial for some, for some members, so we thought maybe having the mansard roof and, and, uh, was a little bit more, um.
Yeah, I, I understand, it's, I, I, what I, what I find that most designers struggle with is like trying to make a new building look historic, it's really, really, that is very challenging. Um, and often I find that the best combinations are where there's, there's, there is a departure, you know, you have the historic part of the building, and then whatever the new part of the building has, you know, a language that, that has some symmetry that, that goes along with the older part of the building, but there is a bit of a departure, so that it's not trying to mimic any particular style, because, you know, to, to make this like a historic, you know, uh, mansard roof, you would, you would need like a to specialize in, in, in.
Yeah.
Historic design to, you know, to accomplish that, um.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
So I don't know, I, I, I feel like it could go either way, I feel like you, you could, you could try to complement the history. I think the neighbors are gonna want that, um, but I, I, I wonder what it would be, look, would look like if you just, if, if the top two or three stories was, was just more contemporary and, and you weren't trying to kind of squeeze it into this historic form, you know, I, I wonder if there's a departure. Um, I know it's another option for you to look at, maybe choose not to do that, but.
Well, you know, actually, to be, to be fair, to be honest, it, it is, it is, it is an option that we did look at, at the beginning.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yeah, we did.
Oh, you sure shared that.
Uh, no, 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 well, you know, I, I, Andrew, I'm, and I don't think you, you, you may not have been at some of the earlier meetings that we had, uh, some initial meetings we had maybe with, um, with someone over at, uh, at the local, uh, historic, um, uh, folks, uh, where we, 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 we did have kind of a modern, more of a kind of a glass box on top of the, on top of the brick building. That was one of the things we looked at, you know, and it's one of the, one, and one of the earlier comments we had was we really want to bring the, the, the feel of the original building back into the neighborhood, and that's one of the reasons why we, we, we went from, we had ten sto, we had, uh, ten feet, uh, floor to ceiling uh, heights in, in the upper floors, so we reduced that to ten feet, just to make sure the, the relationship between all, all building uh, to, to the, to its neighbor, which, adjacent neighbor, which are the townhouses, really feel the same as it was or, uh, you know, whatever before the fire, uh, where, where we're only adding two to three feet uh, to the building, which won't be much, won't be very noticeable, uh, to the naked eye, uh, so, 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 so we play with that, so we reduce the floor height, uh, from, from, from ten feet, we had originally, we brought it down to eight feet, uh, because, you know, of course, the, the lower two floors, as I said, we can do the thirteen to fourteen feet high, so, and, and we're respecting that. Uh, so, so it, it's, it's been, it's been a kind of a massaging here, massaging there, trying to find a way to, to, to respect the, the historic nature of the building, uh, listen to the, to some of the good comments, uh, that we receive, uh, throughout those, uh, review meetings, and try and in, in introduce some of those elements to the building, so we, we've been able to.
Yeah, you're, there's a lot of, uh, things pushing and pulling your design.
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, and I, I, I totally get that, um, and I imagine, you know, we, we don't, obviously, we don't control use or number of units, but I imagine you're, you're under a certain uh, pressure to put a certain amount of units in here to make this project viable. So, um, I, I, there's that, also the economic aspect, which we have no control, um, but, um, yeah, um.
And, 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 Andrew, you, you brought up the whole issue regarding the deck, and I, and I wanna bring that up, I wanna address that a little bit, if, if you look at the, the original building, the, if you can bring the original building, Charles, uh, that is, yeah, yep, this, the deck you see here on the original building no longer exists. You see the two-story deck here with, with, with beautiful columns and some beautiful railings, that's not what we have right now. What we have right now is, is, is a deck in very poor conditions that has, I, I don't even think it reflects this deck that is here, you see, we can't forget deck, it's not the, the original deck that was there. Okay, so, uh, so there wasn't much to really keep, not to disrespect the deck.
Understood, understood, yeah, yeah, it's just I didn't wanna, you know, assume that it should be erased without a discussion, you know, it is.
Yeah.
The, the, the standards and criteria ask us to, you know, uh, talk all, you know, at length about preservation and preserving significant features of the district and, you know, architectural dimensions, and, you know, goes on and on and on about that, so, um, I'm just trying to do our due diligence.
No, no, absolutely, and I wanna, and I wanna kind of answer everything I hear from you, so you can leave here with some comfort, and, 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 you know, and, and some, and one of the reason also why the deck is being demolished is, one of the comments we had was, we need to introduce open space, some, some green space into the building, and, and that's the only place we could find it. Uh, so, so we were, so that, that was, you know, at, at first, we had, we had a, we had a design that, that, that went wall to wall, you know, all the way to the property line, and, and one of the comments we heard from, from, from BPDA was how about creating a, a, some sort of green corridor to allow some sort of green space to, to interrupt uh, the floor between, you know, you, you had the, you had the, all the townhouses or building right, is right against the townhouses, we have a new building being constructed on, 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 on the other side, how, how, you know, how do we create some breathing room and some green space for the tenants, and that's one of the reasons why we're doing this right now.
Sure, and it also helps problem with natural light, to get natural.
Exactly. And, and at first, we didn't have a deck, like this, the small deck that we have here, we, we had a, we had a kind of a green corridor that went all the way from, 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 uh, Dudley to Kenneworth, and one of the comments we had to respect the original deck idea that was in the building, why don't we introduce some, at least some sort of up deck, uh, into the building, and, and that kind of wraps around from Dudley Street towards, uh, from, from Kenneworth towards Dudley, and that's, that's how we ended up with this.
To be clear, that lower space down there is, is a patio, right, it's not, you're not, you're not planning to put grass there or something, right? Or are you?
Uh, the lower space there is planted.
Oh, it is? Okay, wow.
It's not grass, but, the, uh,
Is that gonna get enough light down there?
Grass. A-tolerant, um.
Okay.
Seems to me this, uh, drawing is, the, the, um, uh, the, uh, uh, north is, uh, is looking down, and so I, if I remember right, the Dudley Street facade will be in full sun, so there will be a little bit of light getting in there.
Okay. Um, okay, uh, Angela Ward Hyatt has her hand up, uh, please, please go ahead.
Andrew, I just wanted to, um, kind of add on to what you were saying, um, uh, even though we're not, our purview isn't to, you know, review number of units in a proposal, or certainly anything about the interior, we can comment on the scale of the project, of the proposed project, and whether we feel as a commission, it is, um, you know, it is following the, um, the guidelines and will be harmonious in the neighborhood.
Yes, that's absolutely true, scale and scale and massing are, are certainly under our purview, um.
I, I mean, I'll just, I'll just put it out there now, and, you know, with, you know, full realization that I wasn't at the, the initial hearing, what sounds like it was, um, years, maybe a year or two ago, um, uh, I, I would feel better about this proposal if it was, um, it, if it was one story shorter, um, so that it was, you know, more similar to the massing of the existing building. I think the additional story is creating kind of also, I mean, I, that's, I think, causing the problems in the facade, um, and the problems with the roof and, and everything else, so, but, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, well, Angela, if I can, if I can just say this, uh, architect to architect, I think my, my personal opinion is removing a story will actually hurt the building in terms of scale and, and, and proportions. You'll look too squat, okay, because, because you, you gotta keep in mind that we, 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 we're stuck with the, with the two-story existing brick building, right? Uh, and if you were to, i- i- if you were to reduce it to a four-story building, um, I, I, I think you will find, uh, that the proportions will read a little bit uncomfortably uh, from, from my, from my point of view, of course, you know, it's, it's a matter of taste, that's, that's one, and two.
Try it. You could try it, and, you know.
I mean, I mean, no, I mean, we could try it, and we have tried it, I mean, I mean, I, now, having said that, we, I think the project need the five, the, the, the extra story to acquire to work financially, so it's, it's, I don't think it's, it's it's something that we, 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 we allowed to even consider because of, we will not have a project if we lose those units, uh, those, those four units. So I'm, 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 so having said that, but Charles can speak more to that as, 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 as the project manager. But I think architecturally, if you were to reduce the building by one story, the builder will feel too squat, because, and relationship to the, to the lower two stories that we, we are forced to keep, well, not forced, that we wanna keep, okay, that's one, and, um, and, and, and the other thing too, if you, you gotta keep in mind that our building, uh, in compare, if you look at the relationship between our building uh, and to the townhouse, town, townhouses, and the original building to the townhouses, you will see that the relationship is pretty much similar.
Well, we don't have any drawing to show that, really.
Well, we have a picture.
Okay.
We have a picture on the left that shows the relationship, Charles, you can point to it, you can show, you can show the townhouses right here on the left, you can show the existing building, you can see the height difference between the two.
I don't see, I, I'm looking at the screen that has the two side-by-side images of the original building and the elevation.
But you can see the townhouses on the left side, oh, oh, sorry, you can see the townhouses on the left-hand side of the original building.
Uh.
And, no, 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 it's there, I, I, Charles, you can go back, it's, I can clearly see it.
Hey, hold on, hold on one second.
Yeah, hold on. Oh, you had it.
It's a slide that you've had up, right?
Yeah, you had it up, there it was.
I just, I couldn't see where you're pointing, um, I'm looking on my phone and.
Oh, yeah, you're on your phone, sorry, yeah, that, that.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, right here, Charles, ooh, Charles, right here, please.
Oh, jeez.
Right here?
You go too fast, keep going, I'll tell you.
The slide that we were on for a half an hour.
This, this one?
No, no, go slowly, and I'll tell you when to stop.
The original black and white building, Charles.
Yes.
Okay. The original black and white building.
Oh, okay, yes.
Right here, right here, that's that, okay, so if, if you look, if you look at this, this is the original building, on the left of it, on the left of it, Charles, could you point to the townhouses, right on the left, yeah, right here? You can see the relationship of the original building to the, to the, to the existing townhouse. To the, to the, to the existing townhouse.
That's a, that's a, this is a rendering. That's a rendering of the original building. I'm looking for something that shows your proposal in the context. Of the neighborhood. Um and if you go back to, so. Let let me, let me just throw out a crazy idea. Um if you go back to that slide we were on. Um and you were to have, I mean, I I I. I honest, I don't buy the argument that it's gonna look too squat if you take off a story just because. The original building doesn't look squat. Um now, it might have more grand ceilings inside and a higher floor-to-floor. On that third floor than what you're proposing. Um but that is something that. Is, you know, the higher floor-to-floor looks good on the facade. But if you were to, are you using the attic, the I saw a a window in the in the gable? Is that. Occupiable space at all?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so if that, if you had your floor. Um I mean, I wish I could draw over this, but if you go to back to that slide that shows the elevation. Um of the original, of the rendering of the original building um. Yep, yep. Uh well, that one will work too. That one will work too. Uh well. Now, go back to the one with the fro- black and white with the um rendering of the original building.
I think, I think what we were calculating and not using, you know, quantitative approach on this, but and I wanted to hear you out. A hundred percent on this, but we we're understanding that the, we're trying to. Be close to the same height as the original building. The original building was twelve. Feet each floor.
Yep.
So when you hit the peak, it hit forty-eight, about forty-eight. We have the original drawings from the city. So so if it hit forty-eight, we're a little bit above that, which I think uh. We have fifty-one. That's the adjustment that you're talking about technically.
Are you talking to the peak of the gable or to the eve? The peak of the gable?
The peak of the gable.
Yeah, well, the and that we've already said that, or at least I've already said the gables look a little tiny. Um so. I guess what I'm saying is, again, I'm not commenting on the number of units. I it's not in my purview to, you know, look at your pro forma to see if it works or what doesn't work, but. If you were to um make that at, make those gables.
What you're, what you're talking about on scale, just quickly, um the Article eighty process. Uh and how we measure this building, if you eliminated a floor, it would cut the pro forma by thirty percent. So it will be two, it would be two-thirds versus three-thirds. So so that's the unfortunate reality. With to, in order to create the accessibility, to create the the elevators, to create. A combination of different things to get uh elderly people in here, it, we we can't make the cost work. From that perspective, to reduce thirty percent. It's because of the scale and it's just at the ceiling, is that the, excuse me, is that the floor? Of the Article eighty process. If you re- reduce the floor on this, we would not be in this meeting. It will be a different process. It will be fourteen units. And we would not be in Article eighty process, maybe landmark, but we would, it it's a total adjustment in the economics. So the economics are totally different, unfortunately, and if we reduce that floor. Another forty years, this project is not gonna go anywhere.
Yeah, and and if I, if I can just say this, Charles, if if you don't mind, if if I can just say this. We've, we've been showing this project uh with five stories for quite a while now. Uh I'm not saying that it's been accepted by all, but I think is is been. Due uh positively by most. And in one of the, one of the comments that we received was. How do we actually make it look more like a four-story building versus a five-story building? Understanding that the height difference between the original building and this, in the, in the proposed building is not that great. But there was still a little bit of discomfort of having it read like a five-story building. So while we we were able to. Make the compromise of of making it read, I don't know, I I know that to the trained eye like. You, Angela, you could tell it's a five-story building, but 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 one of, one of, one of the comments we had, how do we make it. Read like a four-story building to the layperson, to the passerby, uh to to be more in concert with what is more prevalent in the neighborhood. And I think we did that. Uh and if you look at the, and I wanna go back again, if you will look at the relationship of the original building. With the with to its neighbor, which is the townhouse next door, on the, on the left side of it, if you're facing on Dudley Street. And you look at our building and relationship to its current neighbor, you will see that the relationship is not that much different. Okay, and and I know that uh we we've, every time we meet with folks, there there are new ideas and we're trying to take all of them into consideration. And 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 we're trying to incorporate as ma- as much of it as possible. And 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 that we don't wanna, we don't wanna eh eh design a camel here on which we intending for a horse, right? So 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 we wanna, at some point, we wanna, we wanna get to a point where we feel uh that that, you know. Eh that we 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 may have arrived to a, to a good compromise. And I think.
I just wanna acknowledge that Selena has her hand up there, and she's had her hand up for a while.
Well, I I I just wanna finish my thought, Andrew.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Okay, I just wanna finish my thought. So 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 I think the idea of uh. And I know Charles is s- spoke to the, to the, to the concern of the financial concern of reducing the floor. But I also feel architecturally that if you, if you, and then we looked at it, if you were to reduce this building. By by one floor, it will definitely not look like the original building. Okay, it'll be, it'll be at least now six to seven feet shorter than the original building.
I don't think, I don't think uh Angela's asking for that.
No, I I wasn't. I I had an idea. It it's, my idea was to make the, to keep the peak of the gable where it is. Um make them more like the original building and have and have the floor of that top floor. Be not at the eve of the gable, but you know, three or four feet down so that you, it's so that it. It 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 would, it would um, it would more replicate the original.
And which we think, which we think we can do, we think, we think we can look into this, Angela, and I think, I think it's a good suggestion.
It's a good suggestion. And and as you mentioned, a hundred percent, I don't wanna make this a financial meeting, but a hundred percent. We would like to add the proper balance to the design to put this into the future. The future, this building, although it's historical, and we love it, that we we kept every possible measure. And had a year and a half worth of meetings with many, many, many people such as yourself. Fifteen, twenty people at a time to really go through this and really tweak the design. So that we can add an elevator to modernize the building, add the proper efficiency. In the actual design for heating and cooling because we don't really want twelve-story ceilings. Uh for that purpose, and also add a level of accessibility, which there is none in the community. Is none. There's no accessibility. You have no accessibility. So when you talk about form and function, we have to really weigh the trade-offs here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Selena, please, uh you've had your hand up for a while.
No, it's fine. I I mean, I I just, I I made this comment the last time around and. You know, and if we're talking about stories or if we're talking about height, you know, and it does, I think, like. Having, and I did ask for guidance from the staff if there's like. When we're doing our reviews, if there's like an adherence to stories versus height and there's not clear guidance on that, so I think. If we're talking about massing and the rhythm of the street, which is. What is in the standards and criteria, this matches the or the rhythm that was there before. And in absence of this. Is a two-story building that suffered a fire and and has subsequently not been um. Useful for to the community, both in terms of the function of providing housing or providing gathering spaces. Uh which is the intent of the built environment, but also aesthetically. And it's not currently, while it still maintains. The, some of the beautiful historical features, it's not in an abandoned state, it's not contributing. So I just think. We're talking about a three-foot difference um and so many more families that will be able to enjoy. The aesthetics and the history of the neighborhood. And so I just think um I just wanna push back on. You know, this fixation on there being an additional story, when for all intents and purposes, you ask anyone passing by. Like, they read the same way.
Well, that's a good point. Um yeah, the the standard criteria doesn't, doesn't say exactly forty-five feet or fifty feet or. It just talks about having like a standard of scale. So I think, you know, when I read it, I'm asking myself, is is is. Is a five-story building really like a, is that, does that, does, does a five-story building represent a standard of scale? In in the neighborhood or or even on the street. And I'm not, I I just don't see that there are many five-story buildings on the street. But um, you know, the other thing too is, the commission has been operating for a little over three years and uh this is. In fact, the most historic building that we've ever uh discussed or has ever come before us. Um I I would, I would say if, if it wasn't for this fire that happened in the nineteen eighties, that this building with its uh national. Level of historic significance would be an easy landmarkable building. Um it 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 just, it has history that it rises to the level of of national significance. Um uh and I would say. No, that's, yes, oh, you, uh, there was one other comment you had, um, sorry, I'm, I'll just uh. I'm 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 just gonna pause it for now because I I just, I lost my train of thought, I'm sorry. Um if 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 the other commissioners uh don't have comments, we can, we could probably open this up for, for public comment. Um if if you feel comfortable.
All right, I'm just gonna share.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just remembered my thought, I'm sorry. Um so the, the reason this building has been. You know, an kind of an eyesore for forty-some years is is because it, it's been neglected um by, by its. Past owners, you know, it, even the last proponent that owned the building. Revealed that um the roof was leaking and and nothing has been done about the roof, the leaking roof for for decades. So it's, it's not because the building suffered a catastrophic fire that it, that it's um an eyesore. Not because of the fire, it's because of neglect, it's because of, you know, forty years of willful neglect. I just wanted to make that point.
So Andrew, if you'd like to go to um public comment, if you could stop sharing your screen, presenters, and I'll bring our script up. Whoever is presenting, if you could stop sharing your screen, please.
Yeah, I would like to go to public comment. I I think you've had a pretty robust, robust uh conversation and. I'm interested to hear what the public has to say.
Okay, who's, who's sharing your screen now?
Charles.
Charles, would you stop sharing your screen, please?
Um, I got you.
All right, thank you. All right, there you go, Andrew. Oops, sorry.
Okay, public comment. Members of the public will will have an opportunity to ask questions and provide. Public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand in the application via the Zoom. Meeting platform. If you are calling in and cannot use the platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Or you can send your questions to staff via email at Highland ACDC at Boston dot gov. The public, uh public comment will be limited to two minutes per person.
All right, um Nicola Danny, uh I will say Nicholas has um provided. Written comment, which I did, he sent it in about, I think, four fifteen this afternoon, which I did distribute to the commissioners. So Nicholas, um you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hey, hi, Joe. Thank you so much. That's why I'm feeling a shift here. I'm hearing a little bit more talk about standards and criteria and it's. Very welcome. And I think the, 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 the issue with the standards and criteria that would be so helpful in guiding us. Like, I've heard a couple of people say that, you know, they're not clear and it and it's tough to figure out. And I think it is, but. Um I've been sort of working on a tool that would be very helpful. It sort of just takes every. Subject or every issue of a property and addresses, let's say, setbacks and height and and built form and. And and all, all these contingencies. And um I think it would be extremely helpful to use that tool, so I'm glad you sent that out and um. Uh I was gonna use some examples of that, which is like, well, I wrote it too, but I'll I'll make it much shorter, which is that um. You know, somebody from the MOH, MOH the other day said, send some language in, you know, what you're thinking of for some of this stuff. And I realized. It's all there. It's all in the standards and criteria. And again, today, while I heard a lot of talk referencing. You know, stuff, I mainly heard talk about, let's say, uh Article eighty or the BPTA and if. And while I heard people talking about sort of respecting, trying to respect the neighborhood, I didn't really hear anything specific. And I think to keep us all out of trouble with that, with, you know, in the, in that gray area, is to use specific language. In the decision-making, um maybe not now on a discussion basis, but when it comes to make the motion to approve or deny it, there are rules that says. That you have to make a written finding, like in the meeting, you know, you can make it spoken, but it still has to be a spoken finding very particular. Um so just three quick points, and I'm gonna, I'll, I'll, I'll be as quick as I can, which is that in this proposal, right? It's it's Dudley Street and um Kenilworth Street. It's, it's essentially to sort of replace that existing structure. And construct it with like an eighteen-unit sort of multifamily situation and rebuild those outdoor areas, which are three-level systems. You know, a deck, um Dudley Side Courtyard, and and that's not a minor alteration.
Nicholas, you are at your two minutes, so Andrew, I'll let you decide how much longer you'd like.
And Andrew, Mr. Chairman, can I get one more minute? I, it's a script and it's uh well-prepared and it won't be wasteful.
Please, yeah, please, please be brief. Uh I wanna, I, other public members have to speak.
Yes, um in in terms of the minority comparative, the um, the major concern is the height massing. And um they're, they're using minority uh subsets rather than majority, like they're using uh. Seventy-one, five, and twenty-seven Dudley, but really the standard says something different. Eight point three says new construction. Emphasize that new buildings should match setbacks and spacings of buildings of similar scale that are adjacent to the project. In other words, you can't reach, you gotta go with what's near you. And I do have two others, but since you guys got it in writing, I don't have to say it. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Nick.
Yep.
Um, who who is next, uh Joe?
Melissa Lynn had her.
Okay, please go ahead, Melissa.
Melissa, you should be on mute yourself. Hello, Melissa?
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. Uh hi, my name is Melissa Lynn, um seventy-four Highland Street. Um I walk by that property practically every day on my way to work or to the library. Um so I'm very, very fond of the history of that location. Um and as uh Mr. Sheldon has also noted. The cumulative um effect of the neglect of it is is disheartening. So um it was exciting for me to hear that there was another developer who was willing to pick up the mantle of trying to. Uh properly conserve this property and also to help us um uh tackle the ever-mountain affordable housing crisis that we have. Um I was in all of the meetings or nearly all of the meetings of the last developer who had attempted to do this. And even though uh that was a very, very different design, um uh I recall that they only really uh tried to preserve. Few things, literally the fireplace mantle that was inside of it. And then uh set aside community space that was intended to be essentially a museum of that history of that that location. Which at the end of the day, if we're all uh can agree, was ultimately gonna be dead space that was never going to be visited. So I I'm very, very pleased by what this uh group, this team has done uh to truly be. uh to truly be uh genuine in their intent of trying to conserve the history and demonstrate um the the historic properties um on the exterior uh throughout uh their their um design. Um, and I appreciate that there is a tension in balance of what we can do to really um address the historic preservation aspect of it. But also to make sure that unfortunately, at the end of the day, it is a business and they they need to 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 make sure that this is a viable project. Um, I am afraid that if we are too, too strict on um trying to maintain um some of the standards and criteria that uh was uh demonstrated in tonight's conversation. Specifically in relation to these stories versus the height, when uh Miss uh the Commissioner at towards the end noted we're arguing about three feet, I'm not entirely sure we've um stayed focused on the true intent of this uh district. Uh Commissioner Shelburne, you and I had this conversation when we first talked about the ACDC and the intent of um this work. So I really want to make sure that we do our best.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're 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 well over your two minutes, I'm sorry.
Say that I'm very, very pleased with what they've done here, and I would really, really encourage the commissioners to uh to approve this project.
Thank you, Melissa, for your comments. Thank you for joining the meeting. Thank you. Kate Phelps.
Hi, thank you for calling on me. Um like Melissa, I really appreciate the efforts to maintain the front and the lower two floors of this building because it's an extremely important historical building. And you've done a a good job of preserving that. Unlike Melissa and others, um I don't think that the job of the Architectural Conservation District Commission is to consider the affordability or the number of units. I think it's inappropriate for Commissioner Salina to refer to the many more families that can live here. Or to raise the questions of affordability in this conversation. That has happened and will happen elsewhere. And I certainly appreciate the frustration of developers having spent a long time talking to the BPDA and thinking they're talking to the neighborhood. Because how frustrating. You're trying to get something built, you're doing a good job of of doing outreach, and now you're facing what really is Highland Park. And the effort here is to try and stick with the standards and criteria that were discussed over a long period with residents of Highland Park and were agreed between Highland Park and the city. And so the benefit of having a good set of commissioners is to focus on these issues. And rather than say, now is the time to derail the process, because we have to consider, you know, whether it needs five stories to work. I think that's a dangerous precedent to set. Because many, many developers have told us over the years, I can't, if I can't afford it, I won't do it. Well, I would encourage you to find a way to do it. Because we know now that not only is the neighborhood valuable to us because we live here, it's also financially a very hot place to build. And if this developer won't do it, another will. So I'm hopeful.
But you're you're at your um two minutes, if you could wrap it up, or Andrew, if you want to provide more time.
Nope, that's fine. I've said what I want. Thank you.
Are 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 there other uh members of the public who would like to speak?
Not seeing any.
Okay, I well, I appreciate people staying uh on on board on the meeting and listening and um these meetings are, I know, very can be very long. Yeah, um it it's uh the difficult balance to to make here when it comes to these projects and the standards and criteria. The commission has actually never voted down a project in its entire um history of operating. Um, some members of the neighborhood may like to think that we're kind of a NIMBY organization. But um it's actually not true. Uh, the record demonstrates that, but we are um supposed to be commissioners, we commissioners are supposed to be beholden to these standards and criteria, so we um want to do our best to to apply them. Thank you. Um, I I appreciate the um the design team for um presenting and um and having patience with all the many questions of the commission.
Thank you, Andrew.
Um, Joe, I, this is Angela. I sent you an email. Unfortunately, I'm at two percent in my on my phone. And I'm not sure if I'm gonna if I'm gonna get kicked off soon, so um are we ready to bring this to a vote?
No, we're not voting. It's advisory review.
It's advisory. Okay, all right. That's good.
I did want to ask Joe, and um I did this last time as well, are we, because this is advisory. Is there any concrete advice? Because I know there's been conflicting opinions of, there always are. Um, so just so that um the team has clarity and if they're gonna revisit any aspects. Um, do we want to recap what those are?
I mean, what I heard, it sounded like they the applicant was open to exploring more of Commissioner Ward Hyatt's um suggestions about changing the gables. And they would explore that more. Um, was there anything else that commissioners, I mean, it seems like the sticking point.
Symmetry came up a couple of times, you know, maybe not that exact word, but I think that's what Commissioner Ward Hyatt was getting to about the window uh placements, arrangements, you know. That old original facade was was quite symmetrical. And when when we start to move things around and make things um not symmetrical, then I I think it draws it draws attention.
Yes, and I I'd like to see a facade drawing and elevation that is that um is correct with the portico, you know, centered on the facade or, you know, the windows, you know, symmetrically arranged about the portico. I I I just, I can't it it's hard to review something that where I'm seeing kind of errors in it and and.
No, no, Angela, let me, let me, let me, let me just, let me ju- just jump quickly. I I think you were looking at the rendering, and I think I think we showed you a line drawing that 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 addressed exactly your concern about that rendering. If you look at the line drawing, it it was perfectly symmetrical. Uh, so I I think I I I mean, I understand it it the the.
I think I think um applicant, I think in the interest of time, what was suggested is that we're going to, you're going to hear now what the commission would like you to explore. So if you could just listen to what the commission has to say and then respond to that in a future meeting.
I I mean, I would also add, um, I would like to see a um a facade where the eve is, that front eve is brought down. Um, I I understand your, the peak of your gable is only two to three feet higher than the historic building's peak was. Um, but it uh there the facade still, it it it's it's not working as a harmonious arrangement in my in my view, and it doesn't, it doesn't pull enough. Uh, it 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 doesn't, um, I mean, it it was kind of a distinctive facade for the neighborhood anyway. Um, but it it's kind of so far removed from what was there that I I think we need to kind of um kind of possibly uh understand what was working in the original facade and see if there's a way to kind of um learn from that, not replicate it, but learn from it. Um, and part of that is the size of the gables and the the height of the eve and then and frankly, the number of stories.
I I just want to echo uh Commissioner Ward Hyatt's comments. I I I think I I agree one hundred percent with all of her comments.
And I think another critical piece is seeing more contextual views.
Yes.
Yeah, maybe like a view from across the street that shows the building in context with the with the buildings on the left and right of it. You could ask the developer uh who's building the new building under construction right now if they can give you some updated facades, because I think what you have in your renderings maybe quite old or
Okay.
Not not exactly accurate, what's what's been approved.
Okay.
Yeah, we're looking to see both sides of the building in context, kind of a zoomed out view of what's adjacent.
All right, Andrew, I think we can move to our next agenda item if you're.
Yeah, yeah, I think I think I think the applicant has a good direction. And um this meeting is recorded too, so uh you you're, I'm sure Joe can give you a copy of it. And you can listen to key parts of it.
Yeah, just just before we uh get to that point.
Yeah, go ahead, Ernest.
Yeah, I would like to know, um, are there any questions that are not clear uh from where you guys are at that you might wanna throw out nows? To be clear, where are we going from here? In terms of our expectations and what you're, what you're, what you're left with.
Is that for the architects?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You you guys are team members, right?
Yeah, yes. Yes, we are. Um, and eh maybe if you would, I mean, I I took the notes and uh as Andrew mentioned, uh we have the video to revisit this. Uh, my question is, um do we need, where do we go from here? I mean, do you know, is this advisory? Uh, you know, I've heard aspects that we we still need to speak with the community. Um, you know, how does the historic district and and the commission work with the the local structure of the Highland Park Commission and based on our project? Uh, we've been at this for about two years now. And, you know, I think technically we we like to get closure. So we can, uh, you know, I mean, we've had many meetings, I want to say over fifty meetings. And we need to figure out how we can get closure, get to the community level. And basically have the the vote of the butters drive the decision of the project.
Well, the the community meetings are are separate from this, and they can they can talk to you about things that we can't talk to you about, such as use. So they they might be interested in use questions, whereas we steer clear of those. Um, but you I you could you could start meeting with them as soon as you want. I don't think there's any any limit holding you back from starting the community meetings.
Well, Joe, do you want to outline just procedurally what the next steps are?
Sure, well, I I in applicant, you know, you can chime in. I think your next step was to go to the BPDA board. And, you know, you'll still have to come, you still have to have the approval of the Highland Park Architectural Conservation District Commission. So, you know, even if the BPDA board approves the project, you still have to have a project that's approved by the Highland Park ACDC and that's consistent with the design guideline. So I think, you know, you've heard the feedback tonight. I think we were clear, I mean, I, we, you know, we've outlined the height of the building, the height of the gables, size of the gables, number of stories. Um, you know, those were the things that we heard tonight. You know, if you want to come for design, you know, try to explore those and come to design reviewer or another advisory review. You know, our process as the Highland Park ACDC is separate from
Everybody else's.
Neighborhood organizations. I'm sorry, Ernest, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I did say, uh, yeah, our process is uh different from everybody else's and I could very easily understand how the team, um, I can understand the frustration, but and I don't want to see them get more frustrated, so that's why I was asking the question, how they understood uh the process, Joe, what you was explaining. And uh, thank you very much, uh, Sasey for you know, for asking for that. So you guys, you know, can move forward with, you know, what it is you're gonna decide to do. I'm sure you need to sit down and, you know, and decide what this project means for you at this point, you know, whether you're gonna continue to invest time and effort and energy, you know, to make it work, because it looks workable, but I'm not the one who's hanging on the limb there.
No, no, uh, thank you, Mr. Wilson. I mean, we've heard some some good comments, slight suggestions here that we will investigate and try to incorporate into reviving the design. Some of it we may not be able to to get to.
Easily.
And so so we will explain that, but whatever we can, I mean, Angela had some good suggestions that I think would make the building better. And that we will definitely look into uh uh modifying uh some of the building uh towards that end. So uh and and I and I, and we've taken notes, also, we we understand um some of the directions that the the group wants the design to go to, and we'll we'll look to see if where where we can meet that as much as possible.
Right, and definitely stay in touch with Joe because he's always on the other other end of the phone for you.
Yep.
And um and he also knows the process inside and out. And uh the rest of us are sort of like the yay and nay folks, we look at it. You know, we 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 take out the tape, you know, we start to look at the photos and say, you know, do we like it, does it fit? You know, we don't know so much about how much blood you have to put into it. We just look at the end results fifty years from now when we all are dead and gone.
Yeah.
Well, maybe some of us.
So so uh just one more question, Joe, as far as uh this advisory.
Yeah.
Is there a reason why? Charles Robson?
Yeah, you're not on my screen, okay.
Yeah, as far as the advisor, the advisory is concerned and and being that this building was um uh it it's basically distressed for forty years and beyond that. Well, how do we, how do we get to a decision or is there ever gonna be a decision or is there some type of procedural approach? Because a fire has happened to this building and also to to kind of move around properly procedurally so we can get beyond these type of communications, because we we want to go forward with the project. So the question is, is there a procedural uh approach based on the fact that there's a safety issue? And the building has been based, two stories have been uh basically distressed by fire to move this forward. Is there a procedural in the in the bylaws?
There's there's not a procedure as far as the Highland Park ACDC is concerned. So if there's a safety issue, that would have to be addressed through the Inspection Services Department.
Okay, and one more question, uh, is uh is 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 there a reason historically we're reviewing this other than it the nature of the building uh being historical or?
No, no, so this, so this is this is a building located in the Highland Park Architectural Conservation District. So any property, any project that's happening within that district gets revived by reviewed by this commission.
And Joe, let me ask this, I mean, I I, you know, I
So so the project is torn down, correct? Is that is that true? Can it be torn down?
No, do not be torn down.
Wh- wh- what is, what is the, what is the actual merit to that statement?
The the demolition of a building is reviewed and approved by this commission. So if you're going to demolish any building or propose demolition of any building in this district, this commission has to approve that.
So so wait, I'm I'm asking you right now, can it be torn, you make that decision or does the board make the?
No, we make the decision.
And we don't have an application in front of us to demolish this building.
You mentioned it couldn't be torn down.
We don't tear down buildings.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, as far as, is it you making the decision? Yeah, but I'm just saying, as far as, is it you making the decision, or is the board supposed to vote on that decision?
So what would have to happen is, if if you wanna propose demolishing this building, you would need to submit a design review, review application to be reviewed by this commission. And this commission would vote whether or not to demolish it.
Okay. Joe, can I just, can I get, can I get a point of clarification?
Wait, well, hold on, I think, um, Andrew, you know, let me know, I'm, I'm sorry, we've kind of gone off script, so, you know, let me know if you want me to continue this, I'm happy to.
Wait, yeah, you, please.
I mean, yeah, I mean, it, it, uh, there, there does seem to be some confusion, uh, about what the purpose of this is, so I think, I think you're, you're, um, what you've, what you're telling the, the applicant is important. Um, I, but, uh, I know we, we do need to close up this meeting. Uh, we're, we're almost at two hours, so.
Andrew, can I just ask one final question, just for my own, um, clarification?
Yeah.
For some reason, I, I think I may have heard that your board is an advisory board, is it, is it?
No, it's not.
So you-
Not an advisory, no.
Okay. Okay. It's good to know.
Joe, after this call, Joe is gonna send you a link to a document called uh, the, um, Highland Park Architectural Conservation District Study Report. And I, and I would like your team, you don't have to read the entire history, but need to read the entire section on standards and criteria. Please, please read that, it's about twenty, twenty some cases.
We, we quoted it, and we've read it.
Okay, okay, well, that, those are the rules, uh, which, by which this commission is empowered. This is a state law that we have, um, applied, that neighbors have applied to this neighborhood to protect our history and its history.
Yeah, and I think, Joe, it would be helpful, like, when I was asking to outline the process, it's so this is an advisory, right? So we're just giving you some ideas. You can have as many advisory reviews as you want, or some people, once they've heard the advice, then they incorporate it, they meet with the landmark staff, and then they re- request a design review. That's where there's an actual vote to approve or deny. And there's different, so I think there, I think the question of like, how do we move forward? Ultimately, you're gonna have to come before design review to get voted up or down.
Okay.
Before, without, without this, um, the certificate from, or the approval from us, you won't be able to move forward on the, on the building.
Okay, all right, thank you. That was, that was good.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that. Yeah, this is all required, the vote is required in order to eventually obtain a permit.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the, um, next, uh, business. Thank you very much, team. Um,
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
It looks like you got a hand.
Um, I, what's, what's, let's get through what, what we have in the agenda right now. Uh, staff updates, go ahead, Joe.
Sorry, sorry, our, our next, I, I don't have a slide. Our, our next, uh, agenda item was a discussion on the bylaws. And, um, you know, when we met on November sixth, uh, we were going to make a decision tonight, not a vote, but a decision of whether or not we felt like we needed to have another meeting to discuss the bylaws, or if you thought you were ready to go to, for it to go to the, um, Law Department for review. So I made, um, changes that I had distributed. And I just wanna say, I think, um, you know, the, the sections that we've been discussing mostly were four point two with the quorums, um, you know, what we wanted to require for design review, if we wanted what's across most districts of a quorum of three, or if you wanted to take on a suggestion by a member of the public, that maybe we have a quorum of three, provided that two of those have to be, at least two of those have to be people who are from, members from the neighborhood. And then I did improve, we had a discussion about, uh, case reviewing projects on a case-by-case basis, and that projects won't, um, when, when something is approved, it doesn't set a precedent for future decisions. So I, I don't know, you know, how commissioners, you're feeling, if you wanna have another special meeting to review this latest draft, or if you think ready to go to the Law Department.
Well, if we had another meeting, when would it be? Between now and Christmas?
So we have another, you know, we have another scheduled, our typical hearing will be taking place. Uh, let me see here. Because of the holiday, on December eighteenth will be our next scheduled hearing like this. Um, you know, if you wanted to try to schedule something the week of the first, or the week of the eighth, before then.
Is there anything else on your agenda, Joe?
I won't know, um, for the eighteenth, I won't know. It's
Yeah.
the, the application deadlines are, are, you know, hasn't, hasn't happened yet.
Yeah. This is usually not the time of the year you get a whole rash of them, though, right?
Yeah, right. Yeah, and I can't guarantee, I mean, you know, maybe our applicant tonight will wanna come back for
Yeah, they may.
their new application.
I, I think we should move to the next time slot for a meeting. That'll give us a little bit more time. I need a little bit more time to go through before I say send it to the Law Department. But I'm anxious to send it to the Law Department, so they could go over it and get it back to us.
And they're such minor, I reviewed the changes.
Oh, good.
They're, they're, it's like really just incorporating what the feedback we gave last time, and and that, um, Nick and others that, that called in, a lot of that language was added, so the reason I would urge us to, to go ahead and send it to the Law Department is that that doesn't finalize it. It just, they review it to make sure that
And then get it back to us.
and then they get it back to us, and then we can meet. And then we can decide, okay, now we're ready for a vote, at the, you know, so we don't have to
Yeah.
Send, and I'm, I know it's gonna get hung up in the Law Department, because they, so I'm kinda like, let's get through that part. Um, because it doesn't, it does not by any means finalize the conversation, but at least we can check the legal review off of our list.
Yeah, that sounds workable, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I agree.
Let's move forward then.
I think we should move it to the Law Department for review, and and folks can continue to read the document and and digest it, and um, you know, email Joe comments, that, that, you know, or concerns. Um, so that, that can all still happen, um.
So why don't I send it to the Law Department, and then report back at the December eighteenth hearing, hope, you know, we'll, we'll give them that expectation that we wanna have, you know, at least a week before then, we wanna have their comments. And again, I don't think it's gonna be as long as last time, because they're not starting from square one, you know, they're gonna be doing a, you know, a redline version of what they had initially reviewed compared to what we have now.
Are you saying they could have it to us by the eighteenth?
I, I can't promise that. I mean, that's, well, I mean, I, you know, I, I don't know what they're, Scott, you know, I know they're busy, but
Sure.
You know, again-
And that would be sort of a miracle, I think.
They're not looking from square one.
Yeah, I would not expect that. You know, but I think, next year would be the expectation.
Well, I'll certainly give an update then, but I think I'm going to, you know, request that we have some, that we haven't reviewed by then.
Yeah, that would be awesome. Request away. Um, if they could also, in their, in their redlining, if they could, you know, cite, if, if, if we've made an error or something in the document, or if they see a, a, a law issue or a legal issue, I guess, if they could, if they could, um, elaborate on that.
An explanation.
Yeah, just for, for our own understanding, and none of us are lawyers, so like, if there, if we've made an error, then it would be good to understand that.
Yeah, well, redline is a really ugly word.
Yeah.
And, yeah, a revised version, or, or clearly-
Yeah, revised version, yeah, clean it up, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, sounds good, seeing that it's, uh, after eight.
Yeah, yeah, we're trying to move this along.
Yeah, and we don't have any more questions, and what else is on the agenda?
One thing I wanted to mention just briefly, I, I think, um, you know, I, I think we should take a look at, um, the standards and criteria. Um, and if folks feel that certain elements of the language are, are, um, ambiguous, are not quite clear, then I think we should, uh, consider as a group working on im- improving the language, just to make sure, make it more clear and more, um, maybe more, I guess, uh, Angela Ward Hyatt used the word prescriptive earlier, you know, like to make it more prescriptive or more, I think parts of it are, are sort of vague. Um, and, um, I think that contributes to a lot of confusion, so I would just be interested to hear what the other commissioners think about the language and see how we can approve it, but that, that's all.
Yeah, that sounds like a great New Year's resolution to
Yeah, I mean, we, it's gonna take forever to do that, so we might as well start the process, you know? Um, similar to the bylaws, you know, you just have to get started. And I don't know, Joe, uh, if this needs to be a separate meeting or not, um, I thought today's meeting actually was gonna be kinda short, so I thought maybe in meetings where we only had one project to review, we could tackle, you know, take thirty minutes to talk about the standards and criteria, but maybe that's impossible.
I, I mean, I think it would, it would probably have to be a special meeting. I mean, I mean, I think, you know, with the expectation that hopefully, you know, historically, January and February are usually quiet months. So maybe, if we don't have design review applications to review, we could focus that hearing on the design guideline, or design guideline.
Yeah, we might have one.
Thank you. Yeah, that would be great. Yeah, I hate to make people double up on meetings every month. I know everyone's busy, but I think it is important that we work on it.
Anything else, anybody? Oh, yeah, we've still got a hand up.
Are we, are we, is there anything else other than adjourning, Joe?
No, just, um, you know, staff updates, I, I, you know, our next, again, because of the holiday, our next hearing will be on the third Thursday instead of the fourth Thursday.
Yeah, can we grab this hand before we adjourn?
Uh, yeah, Nick, if you can just keep, keep limit, if you can limit, uh, your comment.
He knows to do, he knows to drill.
I, yeah. I, it's very, I know, very late.
Nicholas, you'll be able to mute yourself.
Is that better?
Yes.
Great, yeah, I hear you, these, these are long, but I guess a little more supportive about the idea of, um, I don't think you really have to change the wording in the standards and criteria. I just think they have to be more involved in the meetings. And in the bylaw situation, I think, while we're waiting, I, I wouldn't mind mentioning it again, if you could maybe temporarily say something in the script that says, you know, whatever the wording is, that, uh, you know, each meeting we will be applying with each decision, specific standards and crit- criteria. I think that would probably go a long way while we wait for the bylaws to be officially made. And the, and the reason I think that's important too, is I noticed the, the last appellate there, or the last, uh, applicants, uh, brought up the notion, and they're not sure, you know, you, you get, you hear this a lot, if we're regulatory or advisory, and I don't know if this is a function of the bylaws, Joe, you, you, you might know this better, but is there something in the bylaws that we could write that says that there's an early sort of flagging or an early warning system that that people and architects have something very solid to go by, so that there isn't this confusion of, of, you know what I mean? Is there anything like that, Joe?
I thought this applicant was quite clear of what the process was.
Okay, all right, okay.
I mean, after, I mean, we, we've been discussing this project with them for over a year, so I, I'm not clear what their confusion is.
I, I, I'm not sure either, but I do sense this, that feeling in the world, that, uh, everyone talks about the BPDA and Article eighty, and, and you sort of, you set them straight tonight. You said, no, you know, you can't go further than here. I'm just wondering, in a practical way, or to save people some effort, if to get to them earlier, or have the Landmarks Commission sort of focus on specific, you know, uh, pieces of, of that, uh, standards and criteria. And that, that's it, I'll, I'll, I'll hang up here, I'll, I'll listen, whatever you gotta say. Thanks.
Sure, if there's anything additional we can do, um, this is a special process. There's only ten of these districts in the, in the entire city. So, um, when people come across them, I think there's a little extra due diligence you have to do to make your way through the process, it's another layer. So, um, okay, yeah, I would like to, if any, if no one has anything else, I would like to, uh, um, motion to adjourn.
You'd like to entertain a motion as the chair?
Yeah, yeah.
I'll, I'll make that motion to adjourn the meeting.
I second the motion.
Okay, thank you all. I appreciate all your time.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great Thanksgiving.
Yeah, great Thanksgiving. Good night, good night.
Bye-bye, God bless. One love.